This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. And we will now call tonight's Wednesday, August 11th, 2021 regular city council meeting to order. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. I'll stand. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all. Clerk, may I have, will you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Strobin.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Strobin.
Present. And the mayor is absent, excused. Takes us into the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes. We have no presentations and proclamations this evening. So that brings us to the citizens' public comment section. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
Yes, there is one. Sir, ma'am, I would like the below to be addressed at the next city council meeting. I have followed the format requested in the meetings report. Improved internet service for rural La Center residents. Stephen Heckett Thorne, 38916 Northeast 84th Court, La Center, Washington, 98629. Does the city have any intention of making use of federally funded rural internet improvement programs available through the state? The program will cover 50% of projected costs associated with an internet expansion plan provided a ISP is signed on to provide service upon completion. With respect, and that is all.
Thank you. Brings us to council staff reports and announcements. And mayor's report. I guess first of all, welcome to everyone joining us this evening. And I know we had hoped to have our meeting in person, but we continue to work through this pandemic situation and adjust accordingly. And we're also continuing to work through equipment issues. The existing equipment's old and trying to get the necessary equipment is taking much longer than we thought. So right now, I would like to encourage everyone to continue to stay abreast of what's going on on the city website and checking the page regularly to see how the meetings are proceeding and look the current information as much as possible. I think, you know, it's disconcerting. Right now with the Delta variant, we have, according to Dr. Melnick, 1,500 new cases a day over the last four days. There are 600 people hospitalized just in the last week in the state. And 12.6% of our hospital beds are occupied by COVID patients. There's 20 times higher hospitalization in those aged 45 to 64 who are unvaccinated and nine times higher hospitalization in those that are 65 and above who are unvaccinated. This is a virus that's as transmissible as chicken pox. And I guess we're fortunate right now that 53% of Clark County residents have received at least one dose. 62% of those aged 12 and up across the state have initiated doses. And 48% of people are fully vaccinated. The continuing message that we're hearing is wear your masks once again, protect yourself and your loved ones. And try to avoid large gatherings. And just be safe for yourself and for others as we work through this hopeful final phase that we're dealing with right now with the Delta variant. But it is much stronger and it is impacting area hospitals across the state and across the nation. So let's all be careful and understanding and work through this so that we can keep our businesses open and continue as best we can as we work through all of it. I know that was rather lengthy, but working in the area that I do each day, I see many of these issues. I also watched my mom pass away this year. And it's very difficult, so. Some additional information that we have that I want to share with you is the city was informed that the civilian employees have voted to leave the LCPOA civil group and join the Teamsters Union. So the official paperwork was filed with PERC this week. And the local business representative is Jeff Handman, who is wastewater operator three. And so he was selected as the new shop steward. Jeff is very well respected by his peers and management alike. The city and Teamsters anticipate that we'll be able to conduct contract negotiations within two to three sessions. Updates will continue to come to the council as we have them. Keep everybody abreast. And I also want to remind everybody, Saturday is in the park from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This week will be Kevin Selfie and he'll be performing blues and blues rock. Next week on the 21st, it will be Blake Johnston and he'll be performing classic country. Also remember that Thursday Farmer's Market and it runs from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And encourage folks to attend and support local vendors. Be safe, but still participate as much as possible. City council retreat for August has been canceled, as you're aware. The next one is scheduled for September 21st, so keep that on your calendars. Also has come to light that many people were concerned and upset because they did not receive a ballot recently. And I'd just like to remind everyone, if you don't live within the city limits, you would not have received a ballot. Many people have some confusion about the fact that they live close to the city limits. They also have children that attend La Center School District. But there are still different governing entities that cover the school district and cover the city limits. So that hopefully clarifies a little bit there. Just a reminder that city offices will be closed September 6th in observance of Labor Day. And that's all I have to bring forward. Takes us to the attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, council and members of the public. On tonight's agenda, we have the appointment of a council member to fill in the vacant position. And we'll do this process like we have in the past where we will first convene in an executive session to review the qualifications of the applicant. We'll then meet in an open session for the interview of the applicant. We'll then convene again in the executive session to again review qualification. And after that, come back into open session for the appointment and swearing in of the council member. So, you know, this is the council's process and this is how we've done it in the past. And that's how we anticipate doing it tonight. So if there's any questions about that process, I'd be happy to answer them.
And Bronson, is there in this particular instance, since we only have one candidate, is there really a need for the executive session?
That's entirely up to the council, Mayor Pro Tem. You're right, you know, the executive session is not really intended to if there were more than one candidate to compare one to the other, it's just to talk about the individual qualifications. You could do that, I mean, do you need two executive sessions? You might skip the one and just go straight to the interview and then have an executive session following the interview just to talk about qualifications. So I think you make a good point, two executive sessions could be an overkill. But again, it's the council's process and up to the council members.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we knew what our options are in this particular situation. Thank you.
Sure.
Takes us to council comments. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for all the neighbors joining in tonight. It's great to see participation in our council meetings. It's unfortunate we couldn't have them live, but I guess this is the next best thing. The mayor mentioned Farmer's Market, it was canceled for this week due to the heat. There was a message put out about that, and so I've seen several of them. So just so we don't get a mixed message out there, it was canceled. I'm concerned as well about the ongoing COVID Delta variant and the Lambda variant that's coming up behind it. I worked in hospitals for 37 years and I worked in those departments with servicing the equipment, but I was around the patients. I've never seen the calamity that we have right now with overcrowding. I mean, I've seen it when there's a disaster and that's a short bolus of people coming in, but nothing like this. And it's not getting better, it's only getting worse. So everybody, please, please be careful. It's just something that we have to work our way through. If you, you know, those who are vaccinated, it still looks like we're going to need to wear masks. That mandate may be coming down in Washington soon, as Oregon's governor said, enacted today, starting Friday. The other thing I'd like to mention is obviously it's warm outside, so please be careful with your neighbors, your elderly, your pets. Keep an eye on them. Watch out for people that just aren't moving quite right. If you see somebody sitting maybe on a bench, I'm looking out at the wetlands here at the bench across from me. I would be cautious if I saw somebody sitting for a prolonged period of time in this heat. So try to help everybody, we help each other here, get through this. Mayor, that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. I would like to also mention that the cooling centers here in the center would be the library. And those, perhaps seniors in the area that have some serious medical issues that you feel may need potential overnight lodging or such, since the nights are not going to be cooling off much, can try to contact council for the homeless and their number is 360-695-9677. And inquire about potential lodging that may be available for these particular situations. Councilmember Strobin.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah, I echo Randy's sentiments as far as the heat goes. Please be careful and stay hydrated. I will not be attending next council meeting, I will be out of town and I'm not sure if my phone will be able to reach from where I'm at. I do have another comment I would like to make. During an updated report at our last council meeting, I was asked by Councilmember Hill why I ask those types of questions. I ask tough questions, not only because my neighbors or my constituents want to know the answers, but because it's our responsibility to be transparent in the governing of this city. We elected officials are the voice of the people we represent. I do not single out people or persons to pick on them. I am not trying to make enemies or to bully anyone. I've asked tough questions since the start and to all personnel. I've asked questions to the past chief of police concerning police cars and selling them at 65,000 miles. I've asked other counselors to explain why sun shades are needed when the city is running in a deficit. I've asked directors why we really need $50,000 tractors and lawnmowers, can't we just fix the equipment we have? These and the others that I ask are not only my own questions, but also from residents in this city. I encourage anyone that wants to discuss or talk to contact me. My information is on the city's website and business cards. It also includes my cell number. Hopefully this answers Councilmember Hill's question in full. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council and citizens. Thank you for attending this evening. First of all, just I attended the Port of Ridgefield Commission meeting this afternoon and just a couple of things there. The IT3 Discovery Center is coming along quite well there. Again, this is a training center that will be used by most of the schools in the Clark County area. And they announced today that they have a new member that's been hired to help in that particular area. And they're pretty excited about that. The other thing that's been brought up here before is that most of you know that there's a bridge being built over the railroad tracks at the port there in Ridgefield. And right now they're planning to have that open at the end of September. There'll be some kind of a ceremony, they're waiting still to receive approval by the railroad and they're hoping that's going to take place soon. The other thing that came up today was a question that gets discussed about every other meeting and that is broadband. And that is the fact that they're working very hard to get that conduit in the ground and get funding for that. They believe that there's some substantial funding coming from the federal government in regards to broadband and they're seeking to receive that. And if they receive that, that's also going to help us here in La Center. When they put the sewer line down La Center Road, they also put in that same trench several conduits, one or more for the purpose of running broadband down into our city and for residents. So we're looking for updates on that and I'll try to keep everybody up to date and posted on that as well. The other thing also just again, as I'll also indicate that the weather, the heat that we're dealing with right now, again, I would echo what has already been discussed here. Be safe out there, don't be out doing things outside during the heat of the day. Try to organize your day, do things in the morning and the afternoon later to be safe out there. And anyways, I appreciate that. And I want to just respond again to Tom, I appreciate what you shared this evening, Tom. And my only question was the fact that you had asked some questions that I thought you already knew the answers to. And that's why I shared what I did. I was, I thought that you had already been informed of those answers to those questions. And so that's why I was questioning whether or not you had received that information or not. So I do appreciate the fact what you said. My office, my phone number, my email is open as well to any and all citizens to ask questions. And I'm sure that would go along with Councilmember Strobin and also with Randy as well. So I appreciate your sharing that this evening. Thank you, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. That will take us into staff reports. We'll start with Chief Richardson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council and the community out there in the wireless world. This is going to be the report for July of 2021. And this is first part of it, if you have it in front of you or if it's on the screen in front of you, is for also reported crimes and I'd like to just go around and discuss them in a little bit more detail maybe. This council meeting, just because there's a lot of, a lot of the social media conversations about crime in La Center as well as in Ridgefield and Battleground and in the southern Washington. But also some of it, I think people have an impression that crime rate's going up, it's out of control, those kinds of things. So I wanted to kind of put in perspective as best as I can. But so in July of 2021, we had three motor vehicle thefts, one attempt and two actual thefts. And last year we had two auto thefts. So pretty, pretty close, pretty similar. I want you to also know that out of the auto thefts in July, and then we had a couple more here in August, two separate victims had their vehicles stolen twice. And we've been doing some investigation on that. And while I'm not going to get into a lot of detail, I can tell you that we're pretty sure who is doing it. We're going to do some additional investigation and then go get an arrest warrant and arrest the person we suspect of doing that. So that's what, where we're headed with that. As far as vandalisms, we had one vandalism this year, we had one vandalism last year. Intimidations, which are DV-related intimidations, we had one this year, we had two last year. Burglaries, we had one this year for this month, one last year. And theft, that's the problem we're having right now, thefts. And those are generally thefts off of porches or people going into vehicles, most of which are unlocked and stealing cell phones and wallets and those kinds of things. This year we had nine, last year we had five. So that is where you see a lot of our increase and a lot of the conversation that people are having today. What's missing in this is last year we had four assaults and we had no assaults this month. So last year we had four assaults during July. This year we had none, I'm sorry, yeah, we had none. Part of that is probably if people are actually getting, having the ability to actually get out of the house and get away from one another. So that may be one of the things that is impacting that. But if you look at total crime count, and I'm not discounting any crime, because obviously in the perfect world, we'd have zero crime. We had 20 incidents of crime in July last year and we had 15 this year. But out of that 20 last year, six were narcotics arrests, which we can't do any longer in this state without a lot of processes that we don't have in place. And also remember that people get diversion twice before we can even arrest somebody. So our narcotics arrests have gone down, which has driven that number down this year. But if you actually pull it out last year, it'd be almost a wash, it'd be 14 incidents. We had, so we have one more, basically one more incident in July this year than we did last year. And I'm going to now turn the page and just go, this is a list of property crimes that we had and where they are. And I want you to know that predominantly, most of our, again, most of our thefts out of vehicles, the vehicles are unlocked. And in one of the auto thefts, the victim left the keys in the car. So we put up on the reader board, and you will see it, it went up today, about locking your car. It says lock it or lose it, just encouraging citizens to lock their cars. Now occasionally, we do have suspects that'll actually break the window out of a car to steal something in it. But I would venture to say that it's probably less than 20% of the cars, somebody's actually breaking a window. It's probably even less than that to get into the actual car. You see the suspects on video, a lot of times what you'll see them do is they're walking along the driveway and along the street, pulling on door handles, and if they come across a car that the door handle is locked, more often than not, they go past that car and keep working the street. I've looked at some video in La Center, I've seen some video and some pictures in Battleground. And one of the things that's pretty common among all of them is looking for somebody who's dressed all in black with a black backpack generally and a black mask on. And if you see somebody like that walking around at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, that's a clue. And you know, I would have you call the police. Now, one of the issues you're going to have under the new law is that we can only use force to detain somebody if there's probable cause, there's a crime. So that's where the tricky part is going to be, where we see somebody in black clothing walking down the street and that's the only description we have, we don't know who they are. And we go to stop somebody based on reasonable suspicion. And if they don't want to cooperate and keep walking, they don't want to identify themselves and they just walk away, there's the potential that we will just have to let them go, because we may not have gotten the probable cause yet to actually use force to make an intention and make an arrest. Now, that's kind of where we are right now with the new legislation that could change tomorrow. If a court or the AG Attorney General comes up with a new opinion and says, yeah, you know, you can do X, Y, and Z. And so I know it's a long explanation about how we do police work, but that is one of the things we need to look at. In the old days, we could stop somebody based on reasonable suspicion. And then we go get the victim and the witness, we do a drive-by, we could say, hey, is that the person you saw trying to get in your car? And you would say, yes. And then our reasonable suspicion has gone from that up to probable cause. And then we would make an arrest, we would search the suspect for stolen property, we'd get search warrants and we would search cars and that's the way we used to do police work before last month. So, but police work has changed a little bit. The next page after that is a heat map and just shows you kind of where the, our property crimes are occurring. And as you can see, they're kind of spread out this year, this month, all over the place. So the heat map doesn't do a lot of good, it just shows you that there's the areas where we're getting most of our activity. And if we could go to the next page, please, which is arrest. July arrest, we had three, two were for construction theft of lumber and the other was an intimidation, a DV-related DV. The, if you want to compare that to last year, last year we had six. But out of the six last year, three were for drug arrest. So the three for drug arrests, which we can't do mostly, you know, this year, the most part, actually brings us down to almost the same exact number, three. Different kinds of arrests for different things, but three arrests. And then we go to call, oh, yes, go ahead.
Could you clarify what constitutes intimidation?
That's where you make threats, you know, I'm going to kill you, you know, those kinds of things. So especially in a, very common in a DV situation, you know, husband tells the wife, I'm going to kill you, blah, blah, blah. And then she, she's in fear, you know, he had this credible threat, she's in fear of getting assaulted. And they call the police and we come out there, we do our investigation and then we make a mandatory arrest for the intimidation and book the person into jail. Generally when we do that, we then get a, what's called a stayaway order to keep them out of the house until things cool off, that kind of thing. So that's what generally that is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if we move on to calls for service, as you can see, calls for service, total calls went up a little bit over last month. And obviously, community initiated events went up a little bit. And officer initiated activity actually went up a little bit compared to last month. But overall, if you look at it for the rest of the year, it's, you know, it's down quite a bit from the beginning of the year. It's substantially down. If you look at the next page, we're going to go to, and we compare month to month, you can see the total calls for, go ahead.
Chief, real quick, real quick, I know you're saying it's, it's down. But this is also like your police initiated calls are down because we don't have the officers. So those numbers are not going to be accurately reflecting. My question though is, you have 167 total monthly calls for service. What type of calls are those? Because I, I got a phone call from somebody concerned last week talking about, he was witnessing a burglary. And the guy was wanting to break into this house. And so he went in through a window and he called the sheriff's office and, or called the La Center Police and they had nobody. So they had to call 911 for the, and it got the sheriffs. Anyways, they said that they didn't have anybody available at the time, but they'd be out as soon as possible. They ended coming, coming out after the suspect had already left the house. So I, I'm trying to figure out, are these the type of calls that are coming in that are counted as 167? Are we talking those types or?
These calls go into CAD, these are anything that's recorded in CAD. I, I know the one you're talking about, that was a, you're right, there was delay. But what that person actually was doing is going into a house he had permission to get into to get his things. The sheriff got there, called the landlord, the landlord confirmed that the person had the right to be in the house to get his things. And so I'm familiar with that call, you're right. But it wasn't a burglary, but ultimately, but they didn't know that when they called.
They didn't know that, no. And he actually tried to, tried to talk him down from what he had said. And the guy was insistent that he was going in that window. So that's why he actually initiated the phone call. And then when the sheriffs came out, one of them drew their guns right away and the guy took off running. So there was a lot to that one, yeah. But I, that's what I'm wondering is how these calls, I mean, are they calls like this that are going into this? Or they calls, hey, my bicycle was stolen, or I just need somebody to come and get my cat out of my tree? What are they, at 167 calls?
Any call that goes into, well, remember that, that 167 is a combination of what the officers do and what people call in and do. So that 167 is anything that goes over the radio, that an officer car stops, puts himself out with a suspicious person, out with a disabled motorist, out with a drunk driver, any of those things, anything that goes into, typed into the CAD system, generates an event. So those calls at 167, that number you're talking about, is a combination of community initiated calls and police initiated calls. So if you flip the page to the next one, which is page six, you can see that police initiated calls this year were, were only 64 versus last year. Because you're right, last year was 158 because we had more officers in the field. So it would be natural that we'd have more police initiated calls. Now, if you look at community initiated calls, 103 versus the 162. The, all those calls, those are the same thing. If somebody calls into a dispatch, it doesn't make a difference whether it takes a minute to get there or three hours. That call is generated and counts in that 103 number. Now, the reason, I can look at this and my guess, but I'm just guessing, the reason it's 162 last year and 103 this year, people are on vacation out of their houses this year and they weren't last year. So a lot more calls were generated, disturbances, DVs, those kinds of things. Where we went out and we handled things. And now we're not getting those calls this year because people are out of town or they're at work outside the city of La Center. So I hope that answers your question, but the bottom line is, doesn't matter, anything that goes into, either comes through 311, 911, or through the officer's radio that generates a call, gets put in CAD. And that's where these numbers come from.
Yeah, no, it definitely answers my question, chief. I do thank you on that. It just, it also strengthens my thought process that we do need police on the streets here. Because if robberies are going up or burglaries or car thefts are going up, police initiated calls were probably some of that that helped deter that. And you know, it's so, like you and I've had this conversation, it's so hard to quantify the, the crimes that don't happen because of police officers in the area. So, but you did answer my question, I appreciate it.
And I can expand that, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, and thank you for contacting me at last minute for the funeral information last week. I do appreciate that. I know that you took the time out of your, your day to do it. So thank you again.
And I, I agree with you, it'd be nice to have, you know, obviously it's nice to have officers driving around up and down the streets. You know, I can tell you that generally officers driving up and down the street, for the most part, because there's all kinds of, there was a study done in the 1970s called the Kansas City Study. And there's an old saying that random patrol resulted in random results. The way that most police departments are doing this nowadays is they do what's called directed patrol and it's putting cops on dots. You use, you use crime analysis and computers to analyze where your crimes are going, identify a hotspot. And then you take officers that are not patrol responsive, and you put them in that saturated area and they stop everything that can move and try to, that then deters crime in that area. Or you, right, you pull over a car and they have a bunch of stolen property in their, their car. And that's another thing we would call a clue that, hey, maybe that guy's driving through here stealing all this stuff. So there are ways to do all this. And the only reason I'm saying that is when you look at Battleground and Ridgefield, I look at the number of crimes they had this month. And Ridgefield had probably twice as many as we did, but it's same thing, auto prowls, auto thefts. And they, they do have 24 hour coverage, it's just depending how we direct those patrol resources. And again, it goes back to this whole thing that doesn't matter what we do with the police department, that's a decision for the council at the end of the day, whether we have our own police department contract out. When we do those kinds of things, we will contract to have officers deployed, whether La Center officers or sheriff's deputies or whatever, in, within the city limits of La Center. Just like last night, we, I know we had a issue with the middle school where somebody went into the fires with fire extinguishers from the, the new middle school and set the CO2 off in some of the rooms. We had an officer working last night full time, all night. But unfortunately, some of those things happen like that. So we just have to be careful of our expectations and realize that, yes, we all want the same thing. We want visible patrol presence within the city limits of La Center, preferably 24/7. So I'm going to move on because I, I don't want to take up a lot of your time. But the next page, page seven, that's the monthly reports by source. And you can see, obviously, if you, if you look at this, the total number is 34. Community initiated were 27, that's actually down quite a bit from some of the previous first part of the month, or first part of the year. I still think that that's because people are leaving town and on long-term vacations. And police initiation reports are specifically, remember specifically, officer initiated. And you're right, more police officers driving around making car stops. Hopefully we'll generate more reports because they're going to be making warrant arrests and DUI arrests, but they won't be making drug arrests anymore. So page eight is what I've talked about before, is, you know, lock your car, especially overnight. Please take all your valuables out of there, your purses, your, your wallets, your cell phones, whatever it is. Please take those out of your car, put them inside. And you know, if you can invest in a good security camera system, I would encourage that. And don't be afraid to call 311 or 911 if you need something suspicious. And in closing, the last thing I want to talk about very briefly, because people have asked me up several times over the last couple of months about the radar trailer. Our radar trailer is out of service. It was, it's probably 20 years old. It, they don't make parts for it anymore. The last parts we bought to fix it, we bought off eBay. So I'm talking to finance and the mayor and having a discussion about purchasing another radar trailer that we can either use at the La Center Police Department or we can use it with Public Works. Because we really just want to put a radar trailer out there and try to decrease speeders. And then we wanted to have the software in it where it'll actually record speed, speeding vehicles and give us some kind of data that we can utilize. They're not cheap. My guess is around between $10,000 and $15,000 for one. But we got a lot of use out of the old one. And I know we've had a lot of community members and council members contact me. So that's something we're going to look at, getting a quote on. And with that.
That's good, chief, actually, that's actually, and it brought up another point. Is there a chance that we can take one of the police cars that we have sitting there at the police station and like park it at the end of the bridge and put a dummy in there or something, just to at least deter people? This morning, I was flashing my lights at a guy that was doing 50 miles an hour going across that bridge. And I thought, man, if only I could just pop your tires and slow you down, I'd do it, you know? But I, I just, that, you know, some of these people don't realize that, that, that may not be a real car. And I see this used in other cities. And I'll tell you right now, I have a lead foot normally and that thing catches me off guard and I, I'm instantly slowing down. So I don't know if that's an idea that we can implement, but it might help.
There's a couple of other people suggested that, we are going to do it. I had a conversation with the Public Works and Chris Olson today. Chris Olson was actually working out there today in front of the schools and on that road. But we're going to figure out a way to work with Public Works because we need to drive the car out and have somebody drive the, the person that's driving the car out back. And then we have to make sure we have somebody to pick the car up at the end of the day. We don't want to leave it out there overnight or it may become a victim of a theft. So yes, that is something we're actually had a conversation today with Public Works and with Chris Olson.
That sounds great. Thanks, chief.
Thank you for your time. I'm sorry I got a little winded there and I apologize. And I'll let you continue your meeting.
Thank you very much, chief. As always, a very thorough report. And much appreciated. That takes us to Public Works Staff Report and our director, Matthew Jenkins, will present.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem, council citizens. I've got the Public Works Staff Report for August, it's a free one this month. But go through it here real quick, we'll start with Public Works Operations, Streets and Facilities. Public Works continues to work on keeping the city properties maintained and the drainage systems clear throughout the city. As always, the crew is continuously monitoring and repairing potholes throughout the city, with any other road hazards that occur. Right away mowing continues throughout city limits. Parks, restrooms and amenities are all now open, we'll keep an eye on that. Hopefully things don't change in any direction for the reversal of that. But right now they are open and I know citizens are enjoying them and, and those amenities. So parks and grounds, the field area below the wastewater plant has been mowed and will be available for public parking during the summer concert events for music, for concerts in the park. Summer fertilizers been applied to all the parks. Usually we do fertilization and then a mass winter fertilization. So this is a big one for this time of year. Fresh parks been applied to City Hall, the Paver Park and a lot across from Holly Park and many areas in both downtown and within Holly Park. Fresh coating of traction paint has been applied to a number of the bridges along the trails. Battleground work crew is now available and they've been coming out approximately twice a month. Clark County Work Crew is still unavailable, but just having Battleground twice a month is a huge benefit. And we'll, we'll take what we can get, it's better than no work crews like we've been experiencing for the last 18 months. We control, those are constant and ongoing. Personnel, currently all staff are working normal shifts. All appropriate safety precautions are being followed. I will add one little caveat to that during the incredibly high temperatures we're experiencing. I'm having staff come in and work an hour earlier so they can get most of their work done before the heat of the day. So we are doing that when the temperatures are above 85 degrees. On the wastewater operations side, plant parameters remain well within compliance. Biopsied shipments continue, they resort about six per month. Staffs continue to optimize the plant for the warming weather conditions. Plant is running at that point and our inventory is very low, so that's great news. On the maintenance side, routine preventative maintenance is always ongoing. And repair caused of the fault at pump two at the Riverside Lift Station turned out to be a wrong setting on one of the breakers that were installed, the factory setting was incorrect. And so we managed to get that corrected and haven't had any trouble since. On the admin side, the July discharge monitoring port, that's being compiled currently and being prepared for submission to Ecology. That'll be in the next day or two, we'll submit that to Ecology. The annual INI report has been completed and that was submitted last month to Ecology. And staff are currently working regular shifts but maintaining social distancing practices and trying to follow the LNI protocol. On the project side, staff continues to work with La Center School District and Tappan Yarra Underground on punctual items for the commissioning of the new lift station. To be a little more insight than that, currently we're, we're down to commissioning the generator, a few, a few limit switches on some check valves and then the chemical addition system and pump. Because when they tried to mention that, the pump appeared, it was dead on. So Tappan Yarra went and reordered that pump. So we expect those items to be checked off in the next five percent. And that'll, that'll be that for the lift station. The SCADA project at the treatment plant is continuing to move forward with TAG. They're continuing to build that and, and I expect them to be on site for implementation later this month, possibly early September. In the building department, permitting and construction are still progressing at a really strong rate. Staffs conducting an average of 15, 18 stops per day, which results in about 50 to 75 inspections per day, both residential and commercial. Single-family residential plan review times are currently out three weeks, which is still good. And staff has taken in 84 single-family and for commercial building permit applications since the start of the year, which is on pace for last year. The new middle school project is continuing to increase its need for building inspections. That project is in full swing and coming towards the end. So it's, it's pretty labor intensive for both the building official and the, the wastewater department. Inspections have begun at the new City Hall Building. They're progressing well there. And the Community Development Office is now open to the public, LNI provisions apply, there's signage on the door. We ask that, that customers please follow that when they enter. On the stormwater side, the sweet, the street sweeper continues to run throughout town. We are looking at replacing two drive motors on that for the rooms, they're starting to leak. So I'll have more information on that next month in my report. And then the Clark County staff have conducted three of three rounds of MST sampling. We're discussing next steps with Department of Ecology, that'll probably be, probably be source tracing in the area that we're monitoring. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Matt. Good report.
Thank you, Matt. Great report.
All right, that takes us to Public Works. And we have Grant Application Staff Report, our city engineer, Tony Cooper, will present.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, city council, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good, I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you. This, this is a staff report to ask council to authorize the TIB application for paving La Center Road. So the transportation, transportation improvement board offers grants each year for small cities. And by small cities, I mean 5,000 people or less qualifies as a small city through TIB. So the grants that are included for that are called the Small City Arcerial and the Small City Sidewalk Program and Small City Preservation Program. The Preservation Program is classified under two, two ways of repair. And one is a chip seal and the other one is a pavement, pavement overlay. So just go back into the past about La Center Road, over the past several years and back four years or so, La Center Road has been improved and reconstructed. One, because of the La Center Road pump station and sewer project that extended all, extends all the way from Paradise Park Road into La Center up to the, up to about 300 feet short of the bridge. And so that, that project resulted in paving that lane. The, the westbound lane from Timmin Road up to the interchange was reconstructed. uh, was reconstructed as part of the water line project the CPU did. So that, that road, that portion of the road, um, has been repaved as well. But the portion from, um, the, uh, bridge up to Timmin Road, the westbound lane has, has not been improved in several years. And as you've all probably seen, it's been, it's been degrading for several years. Um, it's around twenty-two hundred and fifty, uh, twenty-three hundred and fifty lineal feet, uh, from that stretch. Um, two hundred feet of that is, subgrade is failing and needs to really be, be reconstructed. The other twenty-one fifty lineal feet is, um, it, it is, uh, pavement overlay would, would, would work well in that, in that situation. So, uh, TIB will fund the pavement overlay portion of that Small City Preservation Program, but it won't fund the reconstruction portion. That wouldn't be eligible under that, uh, pavement preservation program. So staff has estimated that, um, the reconstruction portion, um, uh, proposing around two feet of depth of base with six inches of, um, asphalt and, um, some geogrid stabilization. And the pavement, uh, section in that along the Center Road is between six and eight inches. So that's consistent with the, with the existing, uh, pavement depth. Uh, so staff has estimated the, the cost of reconstruction of the section of the pavement will be around sixty-four thousand dollars. And that's with a twenty percent contingency. Staff also estimates that, uh, two inches of the depth of, of overlay of the twenty-one lineal feet of pavement to be, um, uh, paved, it, it would be around just under one, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, um, with that, that, that portion could be, that, that portion can be applied for with this grant. But as part of that, uh, the grant requirements, TIB, um, requires a five percent match of that cost. So, uh, five percent of that hundred and seventy thousand is approximately eighty-five hundred dollars. That's five percent match that would be required. However, since TIB doesn't fund reconstruction in that program, this, uh, hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars can be used for the match requirement, which, which is around twenty-seven percent of the total construction cost. I've included, um, some schematic plans and sections and cost estimate with that. Um, so, uh, the sixty-four thousand dollars, um, that, uh, that reconstruction cost can be paid for using next year's budget for pavement preservation. By pavement preservation, um, I mean that, um, the city receives around sixty, usually is averaging around sixty thousand dollars a year from the motor vehicle fuel tax. Um, and, uh, I already talked to Maria and Riley about this. And they say currently there's around thirty-eight hundred thousand dollars in that, uh, in, for that revenue for, for, um, pavement preservation with an average of about fifty-five hundred dollars per month. So we're on track to get, to receive around sixty-four thousand, sixty-five thousand dollars this year through that program. So this could be used for that, uh, that section of, uh, reconstruction. Um, and thereby, uh, potentially eliminating the cost to the city for that match. So the total estimated cost to the city will be around hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And, um, which will leverage around, uh, a hundred and seventy thousand dollar grant that could be, um, applied for through this Small City Preservation Program. Are there, uh, any questions?
Tony, will this project, um, also address and help with the water seepage we have along that route?
Uh, yes. Now, yeah, that's a good question. Because what we'd have to do is, um, during the, during the exclamation for reconstruction, it probably will look at that and it may, it may, uh, address some surface, surface drainage. It's hard to estimate where that is, so that might be more of an investigation type work. But that certainly can be added as a change order. It's hard to, it's like you say, it's hard to estimate where groundwater pops up here and there. But I know there's consistently one area that does, that does, um, have some problems along the Center Road. So that could be, that could be a change order. That could be, that could be added to the project just as a, a budget item that, um, uh, in case we need it, that it could be used. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tony, this is Dennis. Um, what is the timeline on something like this? Uh, do we have to meet a, a threshold as far as submittal of this? Uh, and what is the, uh, normal time for us? If we, if we're awarded this, how soon would be, uh, we'd be, uh, we'd be able to get a hold of those funds?
Yeah, so what it is, is this grant application under the TIB website is, is called the Twenty-Twenty-One Grant Application. However, they won't award the project till, uh, sometime in November when it goes to their board. So it's a project that would be, um, uh, implemented in twenty-twenty-two, which means that by the end of the year, we would know if we got the grant or not. And then at the beginning of the year could start working on the design and specifications to bid it. And that's plenty of time to, to bid it and, and be able to have that on the street with the, you know, a contractor before, before the summer starts. So it generally, i- it would go pretty fast. I mean, it would probably, in a, in a week, they probably would have this done. It, it's a, would be a relatively fast project. Um, and there's plenty of time during the summer for that to be done. So, yes, there's, it would be in twenty-twenty-two budget, though.
Tony, that one, uh, one sixty-nine, nine hundred, i- is that include the, uh, preparation of the RFP and, and all that goes on? Or is that additional funding that's just required to, uh, to make that happen?
No, it would be, I would be putting together the specs and the plans. And so there wouldn't really be, other than the city time for it. Um, that's really all the, the extent of it. So, uh, you know, I wasn't assuming there would be any other costs with that. I mean, TIB on their application, which, by the way, it is an online application this year. So they do, they do have a spot for, uh, Design and, and Construction Administration, which, you know, they usually put a few dollars in that for that. But it's, it's really city time that, that is used for that, that portion.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Hey, hey, Tony, um, isn't this something that was done when the tri put in the sewer line? Or, or when the sewer line was coming down, uh, La Center Road? And, uh, if so, if so, then is this something we should be budgeting out about every five years that we need to repair? Or is this going to be something that's going to last us some time?
So when the, for the, um, sewer, um, construction, the sewer main and the pump station, that was on the eastbound lane. That was all the way from, that was from Paradise Park Road, um, eastbound to, um, just short of, of the bridge. It, it didn't, it didn't reconstruct the, the, uh, westbound lane. Um, because it was, it was, it was all in that, it was all in that eastbound lane. So this westbound lane was never, we could, was never overlaid because it wasn't part of that. It, it was on the other, it's on the other side of the center line. So nothing's ever been done to this stretch of road. Now, from Timmin Road up to the, um, interchange, uh, during, during the realignment of Paradise Park Road and the construction of the roundabouts there at the bridge, CPU, um, installed, as part of a CPU project, um, a twenty-four inch water line was installed from there all the way up to the junction. And they were required to overlay that, that portion, that travel lane, um, all the way up to the bridge. So it left a stretch that would, was never improved just because there was never a construction project that, that resulted in that. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I hadn't thought I muted my mic there. Um, yeah, it does make sense. I just, I, I'm just concerned that, you know, if this is something that continuously happens, that we're going to end up having to do this every so often. And so we should probably be budgeting for it. Because I know there's a lot of other areas in the city that are experiencing some, uh, decay in, in asphalt, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, so generally pavement overlays last from ten to twenty years, depending on how much traffic they get on them. Uh, about seven or eight years ago, there was a Cape Seal project, um, for all of La Center Road. And the Cape Seal is a chip seal with a slurry seal over it. Now that's a, that, that, you know, that lasts maybe five, five years or so, six years. And that's about what that timeline, that's about how long it's, that, that it's been since that's been done. Pavement over lasts longer generally, as long as you address the subgrade issues. So theoretically, this should last. I mean, you look at the other two, other lanes and, and, um, there's, there's really just surface wear, a little bit of surface wear on the lanes that have been reconstructed as part of the sewer project.
Okay, great. Thanks, Tony.
You're welcome.
Tony, well, that's failing up there. It was failing on the eastbound side too. Uh, when the county had the responsibility of that road and they came up and, and just dumped asphalt in there, leveled it out and rolled it.
Yeah.
And, uh, the westbound side failed, started failing after that.
Yeah.
There, there's something bad under that ground. It's, uh, maybe the west, the eastbound side, uh, coming into town has stabilized itself. Uh, but there used to be a big hump there where they poured the asphalt in and it's gradually got pounded down by traffic. But, uh, definitely something we need to fix on the, on the westbound side heading out of town.
Yeah, I, I do know what you're talking, I knew what you're talking about. I, I know, I, I don't, I wasn't around when they did that, but I, I've, I've heard about it and I've seen it over the years. And so I, I think the overlay project on the, on the, um, east side, it has seemed to, has seemed to, um, fix it. Um, but, uh, again, on the, on the westbound side, it, it's, yeah, something's going on there where it's, it's kind of really rough. Um, it's, it's been having problems for years since it's been worked on.
Yeah, yeah, I, it's definitely a good idea. Uh, do we need to, uh, uh, because we're, we're forming the budgets now? Do you need to put a, a marker in there for, for the twenty-twenty-two budget?
Y- yes. I mean, um, I'm hoping that we could use the pavement preservation dollars to, to pay for the, for the, um, uh, the match portion. But, uh, you know, it's good, it's a good idea to have that in there. Just, um, you know, just for, you know.
Yeah, we can always take it out if we don't get the grant. But I, I think it'd be wise to get with Matt and, uh, get that added into, you know, uh, the budget considerations, uh, because that, those deliberations are ongoing now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Mayor, Mayor, I moved to approve, I moved authorized city staff to submit the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board application for Small City Preservation Projects for La Center Road as presented.
Wait a second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the TIB application. Um, clerk, may we please have a vote, call vote?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Serbini?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Um, motion passes. Thank you, Tony. All right, we do not have any ordinances or resolutions coming before us this evening. Is there, we have no unfinished business or new business that I'm aware of. So that brings us to, um, the interview session. And I guess first of all, I will ask the council if they feel they need the executive session to discuss qualifications or whether you would prefer just going on with the interview.
This is Dennis. Uh, I have no problem moving on with just the interview.
This is Randy. I'm good with the interviews.
Yeah, I agree as well.
All right, we will move ahead then. And we'll have each council member read their question. And we will start with Councilmember Williams.
Okay, great. I want to, I'm glad that.
First of all, let's welcome, um, Justin Keeler. Thank you. And, um, now we will just proceed with the, um, each individual question.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, good evening, Justin. Thanks for, uh, thanks for stepping up and, uh, putting the application in to fill this temporary position. Uh, it's been nice to have another set of eyes, uh, on our budget process as we go through. Uh, my question for you is, uh, what do you envision in a revitalized downtown area? And how do you, how do we accomplish your vision?
When I think about the, um, downtown area of La Center, and I zoom out and try to picture what it would look like with a, um, how do you say it? Like, like a theme for the architecture, a theme for the development that happens? Some sort of visual unity, I think, would be very appealing. Um, I envision those two vacant card rooms being put to good use, whatever that good use may be in the eyes of our community. They are two valuable pieces of real estate. They are too valuable to sit fallow as they are. I would like to see those put back into use either as card rooms, which may not be possible, or some other, um, revenue generating use. Does that answer your question?
I'd find that mute button. Yeah, that, uh, that helps. Uh, now, we, we have a, we have a re, um, we have an asset there downtown and obviously making the most out of it is something that the, the town needs. And, uh, I, I like your idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Okay, Councilmember Strobin?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, let's see here. All right, Mr. Keeler. Uh, as you know, uh, being a council member means that you're going to have to make tough decisions and some unpopular ones with other members, uh, on your team or even with residents in the city. So can you tell us a time when you made a point that you knew your colleagues wouldn't agree or be resistant to?
Sure, I can. Um, let me pause for a beat to think of a, an appropriate answer. You know, in my, um, in my day-to-day life, I, I work as an administrator for a, a public special district. And in that role, I am tasked with making decisions, large and small, all the time. The, the most important, the most, the tool that I've used that has led me to the most success when having to make a point that I knew others disagreed with or when I had to make a decision that there was not a one-hundred percent consensus around. Just by, by focusing on the why, focusing on the why of the decision, what the issue or the opportunity is we are seeking to, to go after and then making time for people to actually be heard. You know, in my experience, it's not always necessary for everyone. It's not possible for everyone to get everything that they want or that all of the decisions that are going to be made are, in individuals' eyes, the best possible decision to be made. But I've found that if you give people real opportunity to, um, engage on an issue, share their feelings, their thoughts, their concerns, and put that into the, um, the hopper for decision-making and you're transparent about how the decision was made, that can help. Um, I know it may be a little bit of a generalization when we're faced with really difficult challenges. But in my experience, providing people the opportunity to be heard and share in a supportive environment makes a big difference. So focus on the whys, be transparent in the decision-making process and give people opportunity to, um, provide input and be heard.
Okay, um, no, that's well and great. Um, but can you also tell us the time when you've had to do this type of stuff? And a little explanation behind it of what it was?
So again, I'm, I'm drawing on my, my work life because that is where most of my experiences come from. I will give you a specific example of a decision that I made that people mixed bag on reception. I oversee a department within my organization that is responsible for providing functional support to staff at large out in, out in our communities. I had decided to remove some of the services that that group offered due to a, a number of factors. And on one hand, the customer service aspect, it was probably not, it was not the best decision, but from a financial and time management decision, it was the best. And I'm, I'm not entirely comfortable with sharing any more specifics around that particular instance, but the decision, it depends on which lens you're looking at an issue from, right? Like if I was looking at this as a purely financial decision, then it was 100% the right choice. If I was looking at it from a customer service point of view, it was not 100% the right choice. And so I had colleagues on both sides of that equation, either pleased or displeased with my decision.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Justin, I have the next question. And it is, the city of La Center has struggled with a structural deficit, a budget deficit for well over the past 18 years. What is your experience addressing similar budgetary issues and struggles? And what approaches have you used or researched to achieve successful realignment of budgetary expenses and revenues?
So I will be out front and say that I do not have experience addressing a structural budget deficit at the city government level. Sorry, I'm just rereading the question here.
Did you want me to repeat it?
No, that's, that's fine, Mayor Protem.
It was a long one.
It is, it is a long one and so the budget is where we have a really tangible symbol of our community's priorities. And a structural deficit means that the funding coming into the city is not, it is not enough to put the vision or live up to the expectations of the community. There, there are a number, there, there are a couple of ways I think you could look at this. You know, one is on the revenue side, finding ways to increase the revenue coming into the city. Primarily in our case, I think that needs to come in the form of business development in line with our community values at the junction. The other is to look for every which way that you can to reduce costs. The cost savings decisions are of course, I'm not going to say they're the easier ones to make because they're not, they're not easy at all. But those are the things that we have direct and immediate control of. So my, my knowledge of public sector finance is steeped in my understanding of property tax levies in Washington State. We are, we're very limited in the, the streams of revenue that we, we can see out of our property taxes that go to directly benefit the city. Because those taxes go to our school districts, our fire districts, our cemetery and water districts, et cetera. I would be very interested in looking at whether or not there is any capacity left in our city levies to bring in more revenue. That of course would have to go to the voters. You know, if I want to talk about strategies to fix structural budget deficits, you know, I can talk about my family budget and the same approaches, you know, apply. Increase the funds coming in or reduce costs.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Councilmember Hill? You're muted, Councilmember Hill.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor Protem. And Justin, thank you for joining us this evening. And thank you also for throwing your hat in the ring. I think that's, it means an awful lot to me to see citizens of our community step out and try to fill vacancies and opportunities to, to serve our country, our community. My question is to you, based on our city's population of approximately 3,900 people, and with these numbers growing approximately to 4,300 in the next three years, do you think we need to hire, do you think we will need to hire additional city employees? If yes, where within the city would you suggest they be added? And if no, why not?
Sorry for the long pauses. I, I like to read and process a bit before I start to talk. Well, based on what's on the screen right now, it may be useful if the city had a city managed community development coordinator or planner. I'm a public employee myself. And looking at our financial picture, the, the structural deficit that we spoke about earlier, looking at how much use we've had to put our reserves to over the last four to five years to keep our services and our amenities happening at the level that we all value in our town. I would be, the short answer to this question is yes, absolutely, we should be hiring, we would need to hire city staff, community development, law enforcement. My, my struggle with this question is that looking at the budget, anybody seeking to find employment with a city would be wise to look at the budget. And all you would have to do, in my mind, all I would have to do if I were seeking employment with the city of La Center would be to look at the reserves and what's happened to them, look at how that money was being spent and that it was not distributed willy-nilly, and see the financial writing on the wall. I would think it would be very challenging for us to recruit, recruit and retain city staff. And I'm sorry if I'm, if I'm being blithe or casting a, a large net here, but my, my response to this is, yes, we do need to hire staff. And I'm thinking primarily, primarily of law enforcement. That's a value that I have heard expressed loud and clear over the last year or so. But it's how that concerns me. How, how would we have a stable enough financial picture where people would want to be the committed city staff that our community deserves? So I think I answered the question and I think I went off script a bit and my apologies.
That's fine, thanks, Justin, appreciate that.
Sure, Mr. Hill.
Thank you very much, Justin. I guess I need to ask council at this point, do you feel you need an executive session to discuss the questions or are you comfortable moving ahead with a vote?
I think I would like an executive session, if possible, please. I don't know how the rest feel.
All right.
That's fine with me.
10, 15 minutes?
It didn't take very long.
I'm sorry, what?
I don't think it'll, should take very long. 10 minutes probably should be sufficient, I would think.
All right. So I have currently 7:50. Council will go into executive session and plan on returning at 8:00 PM.
Mayor Protem, are we doing the one Janice sent out? Ms. Corbin sent out?
Pardon?
Is that the exec, is that the executive session we're going into? Is the one Ms. Corbin sent out?
One, yes, the executive link was on Janice's email. And we will use that and close out of this one and then we'll return. So patience, everyone, we will be coming back.
This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry, better repeat myself. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and we will resume the regular session. It is 8:03 PM. And we will, Maria, do you take an, an actual oral vote?
Yes, we will.
All right, we will proceed. We need a motion first.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we, we vote on the application of Justin Keeler for the temporary council position that's open.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to proceed with an oral vote on the application of Justin Keeler to fill the council position. Clerk, can you take the role?
Yes, Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
No.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Servini?
Yes. All right. We have the approval to move ahead with the swearing-in of Justin Keeler. And that will be conducted by Maria, our clerk. There you are.
Good evening, Mr. Keeler. Are you back on? Yes, you are. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Justin Keeler, do solemnly swear.
I, Justin Keeler, do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently and impartially.
Truly, faithfully, diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Of council position number one, City of La Center.
Of council position number one, City of La Center.
In and for Clark County and the state of Washington.
In and for Clark County and the state of Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Thank you and welcome, Councilmember Keeler.
Welcome, Justin.
Thank you.
Welcome, Councilmember Keeler.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for taking the step forward to apply. I look forward to bringing the same motivation and community involvement that you did when you took on the position here at the La Center Library. And also having a younger and new, fresh eyes and perspectives to bring to the council.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I hope to be able to help.
Looking forward to working with you, Justin. I know you're doing a great job for the city.
I will do my best, thank you.
All right, we have no additional business to come before the council this evening. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, maybe our new council member would like to have that privilege.
Here you go.
It's a lofty privilege, Justin.
I'm not, I'm not totally up on the rules of order, so this meeting is adjourned. I hereby have the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, right.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn this evening's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, public, for participating virtually and your patience through it all. And have a good evening and stay cool.
Thank you, Liz, for taking on the duties this evening. Appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay, thank you.